Oh, 7 o'clock. All right, we don't have to wait any longer. It is 7 o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting from Minnetonka for May 20th. So first order of business is I'd like to invite all of you to join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome all of you here this evening, and also those that will be watching later on in YouTube. First, I'd like to, there's, I'm going to make some introductions and then approval of the agenda, and we have just a slight change in the agenda, but first introductions. So, again, a reminder to all of us here, as well as out there, if you have electronic devices with you, please turn them on silent or airplane mode, or off, so they don't disrupt our meeting. So with that, introductions, I'm going to start at the far end this evening. We have our chief of police, Paul Falls. Next to him, we have our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven, Ron Beatty, our community development director, David Abel, Brian Grimm is our financial director, and then we have financial...
Finance director.
Finance director, thank you. And then we have our city administrator, Mike Brone. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my left, our council members, Pam Mortensen, Mike Molliter, John Chamberlain, Shannon Bruce, and then on the end, we have, sitting in for our regular engineer this evening with WSB is Paul Hornby, back again, welcome. And then we have our director of administration, Cassandra Tabor, with us too this evening. So with that, approval of our agenda, what I'd like to do is I'd like to just put the governor's safety award first, under special presentations, and then update from Three Rivers Park District as the second, and then financial audit will do that last. So we have, basically, we're just flipping financial audit to C and governor's safety award to A. Yes, to A. Is there approval, are there any other changes? If there are none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Bruce to approve the agenda with those changes. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So we'll move on to our special presentations, our governor's safety award. Ms. Tabor.
Yep, Cassandra will start this, and then I'll have a few comments after she's done.
Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to follow up with you. I had mentioned at the last council meeting that the city would be receiving a governor's safety award at the beginning of May. So on May 8th, I attended the 85th Annual Minnesota Safety Conference. Since 1934, the governor's safety awards program has honored Minnesota employers with exceptional safety performance across all sectors, so private and public. Three levels of awards are given, meritorious achievement, outstanding achievement, and an award of honor. So applicants are judged on their incident rates, so that's injuries, incident rates better than the national industry standard over the last three years, a comprehensive safety program, including training, engagement, and assessment. And Minnetonka was one of only two cities that earned an award this year, which is pretty significant. So, we were acknowledged with a meritorious achievement award, and we were one of 170 employers in the state who received this award. Good news.
Mr. Brone.
Yeah, and I just wanted to follow up, and first of all, I'd like to thank the members of the safety committee that have been part of the safety committee for the last three years, which is the timeframe for this particular award. That's Paul Falls, our police chief, and then also Brad Carlson from our police department, who's been instrumental in helping Cassandra with all the inspections and walkthroughs of city facilities. Also like to thank our public work staff, there's been a number of people over the years, they have rotating two-year terms, so they're on for two years, and then often we replace one a year, so we've had Nick Redkey, Randy Storms, Trevor Barrett, Mark Klein, and Carter Ossley over the last few years. And then, of course, Cassandra, who leads the safety committee, prepares the agendas and makes sure everything kind of stays on task. So before Cassandra came here in August of 2015, when she was hired, I staffed the safety committee, that was part of my duties as the assistant city administrator. And one of the things I always wanted to do, but never actually got to, was to kind of find a different and better way to do our safety services for our city. We used to contract with MMUA, they did a fine job, but I always felt that, and we could do a better job if we did something different than that. And so I gave that duty to research and implement to Cassandra, she's done a terrific job, as you can see, three years later now, we're winning a Minnesota Safety Council Award. So, the other piece of that, that I want to make the council quite aware of, is kind of the cost that that old MMUA program was for us as a city. I look back at the last three actual contracts, we ended our contract with MMUA in September of 2016, it was an October 1 through September 30 year for them. And so in the last three years, we, of 1314, 1415, and 1516, we spent a total of $47,700 for those safety services. And I know, after talking with Cassandra, and what she's been tracking for costs the last number of years, is that we're averaging about $5,000, maybe $6,000 in costs, and she's also bringing in some speakers to do some training that she can't do herself. So we're saving $10,000 to $11,000 a year for the last three years, $30,000 to $33,000 if you add it all up. So, it was more work and more responsibility for her, that was one of the reasons why she got the promotion she did a couple of years ago now. And it made it easier for me to recommend that promotion, knowing that the outstanding work she's done, as you can see, culminated in May here with an award. So, kudos to her, she's done a terrific job in this piece of her job description, and I just think it's been a win-win for the city to have her implement and do the safety program that we have currently, and we're saving money to boot, so it can't get any better than that, so.
So, I'll meet you at the podium here, because I have the award that I will present to you on behalf of the city, I guess, I'll give it to you.
We did pictures ahead of time, so if somebody's wondering why we're not taking pictures.
Well, this is the award, big, big award, but just a plaque you can hang somewhere in the city. So the city received this, and it's the Meritorious Achievement Award in recognition of excellence in injury prevention, performance, and occupational safety for the year 2018, and I'm sure we'll see more of these, so congratulations. Thanks. So next, we'll move on to Three Rivers Park District, we have Kelly Grissman.
Yep, Grissman.
Thank you, with us this evening, so.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members. I've got a brief presentation, about five slides, I was here not that long ago, so this is another great opportunity to just check in, make sure we're going in the same direction. I had a nice opportunity to also meet with Mayor Whalen and council member Molliter last week. We've got a new commissioner for your district, Commissioner Marge Beardy, and we always like to make sure we have, take a few minutes and do a greet with the district that she represents when we have a new commissioner, and that was a really nice meeting, and thank you so much for your time. So with that, I will start the presentation, and I want to encourage you to ask questions or comments as we move along, I might much rather address them while they're fresh in your mind, than wait for the end, so, here we are. So as you know, we've got a lot of, excuse me, a lot of regional recreation assets within your community. We have one park reserve on the adjacent border, the southern border, Carver Park Reserve, one regional park, Lake Minnetonka, located completely within your community. We have two regional trails, Dakota Rail and then the future Baker Harbor Regional Trail, Dakota Rail running basically east-west, and then Baker Harbor running north-south. And then we have two special recreation features, Galewood's Farm, which I'm sure everyone is familiar with, and then Kingswood, which is, has limited access to the public right now, and that's really a long-term vision of Three Rivers, of that just being kind of a natural resource-based park. So with that, I wanted to do a few updates with Kingswood. In November, I believe it was November of 2018, Three Rivers was here asking the city for permission to acquire an 18-acre parcel, that is shown in magenta on this map, we've since closed on that property. The property owner immediately adjacent to the south has reached out to Three Rivers and is also interested in selling their property to Three Rivers. It's 16 acres, it's undeveloped, it's right on the shoreline, and with acquisition of that, Three Rivers doesn't anticipate any other acquisition in this immediate area, with the exception of a future Boys and Girls Club land exchange, where we own land on the north side of County Road 15, the Boys and Girls Club owns land on the south side of 15, and we simply want to do a swap, so that we own everything continuous to Galewood's up until County Road 15, and then the Boys and Girls Club can kind of own that whole northerly piece, as well as would be between Little Long Lake and County Road 15.
Can you show us, I'm sorry, you should show us on the map just specifically what you're talking about, that land exchange?
Red button, right? Yeah, so if you can look, this kind of pink color is all land that's owned by the Boys and Girls Club. This dotted green line is the future Baker Harbor Regional Trail. And this green area, or green land here and here, is all owned by Three Rivers. Immediately south of here, so all of this is Galewood's Farm, and County Road 15 is right here. So what we're looking at is giving or exchanging this piece of Three Rivers land for these two pink areas of the Boys and Girls Club. So we would own everything on the south side, and the Boys and Girls Club would own everything on the north side. And other than that, we don't have any other additional acquisition needs, we're not anticipating anybody else calling us, and if they did, I think we're very content with what this plan is for Kingswood.
And so it looks like that you're, the other part of the trail that goes to the Boys and Girls Club, you're looking to do an easement, then?
Yep, that would be an easement.
Have you spoken with them about that, are they amenable to that?
We've been working with the Boys and Girls Club for many years, and our problem is that they have a lot of staff turnover in their director position, and so we're kind of just waiting to have one person that we can continue to coordinate with, but we have met with some of their board members, and our likely plan moving forward will be to just do an appraisal and make sure everything balances. Certainly, it's our interest that we wouldn't do any cash exchange, and that it would just be land for land, but a little too early to tell how that would shake out. And then, of course, we would be back in front of the city, because we'd have to reconfigure some parcels, but at this time, we don't have an agreement in place, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, that that's really the only thing that we're anticipating in this area.
Kelly, are the dark green areas wetlands?
The dark green areas.
So like, just south of the southern part of Little Long Lake, is that all wetlands?
Yep, let's see, so I think you're talking about this area?
Yeah, right.
A lot of that is floating bog.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, when we bought this property, the parcel actually extended further into the lake, and Hennepin County recently went and reconfigured all of the parcels, so the parcel now lines up at the ordinary high watermark. So for example, we thought we were buying nine acres, in reality, we really were buying five acres at that time, and we knew what we were buying, but if you were a private resident, I think it would have come to us as a surprise that you didn't own all of that. So anything that's below the ordinary high watermark is really owned by the people of the state of Minnesota. So this is the Baker Harbor Regional Trail, and while we're talking about acquisition, we've been doing some good work with the support of the city, and we have two different acquisition needs, one is the Boys and Girls Club land exchange that we just talked about, and then we need an easement of some capacity from Kings Point Road to Six Mile Marsh. And then there's a few spots where the road is along, the road right-of-way, that we might need a foot to five feet, we don't really know, and we won't really know until we move forward with the design phase. But there's just a handful of situations where that would occur. So if we start from the bottom, we're going through Carver Park Reserve, the first few miles of the trail are already in place, and then, right now, we're currently designing a trail, with a trail piece that would finish the Carver Park Reserve connection, and then make a connection to Lake Minnetonka, to the underpass of County Road 44. So, basically, you, the swim pond area, the play area, the existing paved trails in Lake Minnetonka would then be connected with all the paved trail system, the nature center, the campground, et cetera, of Carver Park Reserve. And then the trail construction, the north-south trail construction from Woodland Cove, I believe, is all complete or will be complete shortly. Then this is the gap between Kings Point Road and Six Mile Marsh, that we have one acquisition, whether it's an easement or fee title, I guess it depends on the willing seller, we don't yet have a willing seller. And we have all of our acquisition needs in place, from Six Mile Marsh all the way up to Dakota Rail, with the exception, there's some road-based route where we need, we might need a little extra road right-of-way. Then we're on the Dakota Rail Regional Trail, which of course, that's in place. Then heading north, we go through Galewood's Farm, hogged County Road 15, and then north, north through Kingswood, all the way to Loose Line State Trail. And again, in that section, Three Rivers either owns the land, we'll be working on that land exchange with the Boys and Girls Club, or it would be mostly within the road right-of-way.
So, Kelly, on the County Road 15 section?
Right about here, yep.
Approximately, how long is that, do you know?
That piece... You know, I bet it's less than a half a mile, give or take.
So, and land right-of-way is already secured there, or road route?
The County Road, we should be at more than adequate there. There is one private property that the trail would go next, who we had worked with that property owner when we did the master plan, and at that time, they were abundantly clear they weren't interested to selling anything to Three Rivers in easement or other, and we absolutely respect that, so we'll reconfigure the road, or shorten up the trail to figure out a solution that sticks within the road right-of-way for that. Yeah, it's absolutely in our best interest to be very sensitive to our neighbors. And then, want to just let you know that this summer, we're going to kick off a master plan update for Lake Minnetonka, as well as Carver Park Reserve, so we'll be working with your staff to figure out how do we best engage you and your residents in some type of community engagement process, and to better understand what your local needs are, and then to evaluate whether they have a role within the regional system or not. I think you guys have the same mindset that we do, that we don't want it to be duplicating services, we're ultimately all taxing the same residents, so it's in our best interest to be very collaborative with the city on that. We've got the trail connection that I spoke of between Carver and Lake Minnetonka, that's scheduled for completion by 2021, and we're also doing some pavement reconstruction in Lake Minnetonka Regional Park. And then, we have a brand-new mountain bike system that will be under construction probably late, later this summer, and hopefully open by fall or spring of next year.
In Carver?
In Carver. And your residents would be able to access it through this new regional trail connection, where the tunnel is already in place, and then through Woodland Cove. They'd be able to come into the park, go under the underpass, hook up with the paved trail system, and then the mountain bike system will all be built right off of that paved trail system, so, again, really easy access for the ambitious rider, I should say.
And you said by fall, you're thinking?
That's the plan, yep.
To start it.
That I think they're going to be moving forward really fast, we've got a very ambitious donor that wants to see action sooner than later.
All right, okay.
So with that, I'll stand for any additional questions or concerns. And just point out that, so we are working on the acquisition opportunity at Kingswood, and I believe David is going to be helping move that forward to the planning commission next week, then Parks Commission, and then we would be back in front of the council, asking for two things, one is for municipal consent to acquire the property, and then to amend the master plan boundary to include that property within the boundary.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So our third and final presentation of the evening is our audit and the CAFER presentation, Mr. Grimm.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilors, we have three speakers here tonight, so I've got a lot of auditors, which can be scary, you know, I don't know, but I think they're good guys, so. We got Dennis Huguen, Lucas Chase, and Lance Lownger here tonight from our audit firm, Clifton Larson Allen, and they're going to hear, they're here to discuss and give the presentation of the 2018 audit. You saw in the packet, there was, you know, 140-some pages of documents, so it's a lot of work each year, and it's a, I mean, obviously, a team effort between, you know, the finance staff, and then obviously, the auditors do their job, and you know, the report gets put together, so that everyone can go through that and see how our finances are, so I'll probably just let them get into their presentation, and then maybe if there's any questions, I know in the memo I outlined sort of how the general fund, you know, and we had talked about before, it came in, you know, better than expected due to, you know, the building permits was the main item, but that'll be, they'll touch on that, as well as some of the utility funds, water, sewer position, et cetera, so I'll turn it over to Dennis, it looks like he's going to start.
I'm just going to briefly start and say, I am so glad I got to hear the Three Rivers Park District update, because I'm always telling the guys, you got to move out west, you know, this is a fantastic place to live and raise a family, so, that was really fun to, I was kind of poking them and saying, that's why you should live out here.
Because Dennis, actually, I think everyone knows he's a miniature, maybe they don't, that he is a Minnetonka resident, so.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, my wife has taught at Grandview Middle School for many years, so, and before that, he'll taught for over 20 years as a kindergarten teacher, but anyway, thank you so much, Madam Mayor, Mayor Whalen, and members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to come and present the audit reports for the fiscal year, or the calendar year ended December 31st, 2018. Just a reminder, I saw it on the announcement, that it's, they use the acronym of CAFER, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It really truly is an indication that the city is holding itself to a higher standard than it would be required to, in terms of financial accountability, it's got a lot of great historical information, and will be available for download on the, on the city's website. We really do want to thank the people who do all the heavy lifting, though, you know, Brian, and Angie, and Dawn, and all the people here at the city, that I know you would be thoroughly impressed with the amount of information that it takes to put together that 140, or whatever pages Brian was referencing, but a lot of hard work, they did a really good job, they've really developed a great working relationship with our audit team, so, we couldn't do our work without them, so we very much appreciate that, and certainly, Mike Brone's opportunity that we had to meet with him and do an exit meeting with him, so that we're all on the same page in terms of the materials that you'd see, appreciate his time. And then, as you indicated, Brian, I've actually asked, and we don't do this very often, where three of us show up, we don't mean to overwhelm you, but it's really a great opportunity for both these guys to get a chance to stand in front of you. Lucas Chase was the manager on the audit, so he had all the day-to-day responsibility of oversight for the team, and then Lance Lownger did the senioring, you know, so he's actually, you know, in the trenches, working with staff, and working with Brian, and things like that, too. So, it's just a really good experience for you to hear from them directly, the people who are actually working with the numbers, and working with the staff, and things like that. So I'll just sit down and let them take over, I will stick around for any questions that you're going to have, but to the extent something comes to mind as they're walking through things, you know, it's a nice little informal grouping with not a lot of other people here, so, to the extent something comes to mind, don't hesitate to ask your questions as they come up, or at the end, we'll certainly ask you again if you have any questions. But thanks again for the opportunity, and we'll let them take it away.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, so, we have a brief presentation here, and then like, as you said, before you just raised your hand, or stopped us as we're going through, if you have any questions. First slide here, agenda, so we have some required communications we have to bring to your attention as members of governance, then we'll go through some audit results, financial results, and then just some other items at the end, such as some GASB updates or some standard updates. So first, in the required communications, the audit provides reasonable, not absolute assurance, we do a risk-based audit, that being said, we do look at quite a bit, and I'm sure Brian could vouch for that. Then, when you're going through these, realize there are some estimates in your financial statements, so your capital assets, you have useful lives, and then you have, you know, depreciation method also in there that affects your annual depreciation expense, so when you're, you have, in the fund level, you have capital outlay in your government-wide statements, you have depreciation expense that's affected by those useful lives. Then your valuation of your investments, so you have GASB 45 and 72 that affect your, how they're presented, and the actual valuation of your financial statements, since you have pretty low-risk investments due to statutes, it's all pretty much taken right off the face of your brokered statement, so, pretty straightforward for you guys. And then you also have post-employment benefits, so you have other post-employment benefits, so insurance provided to retirees, and then you also have compensated absences, so that's sick and vacation, PTO-type liabilities, so there's some estimates, some, you know, actuarial estimates in there, and also just, in general, you know, estimating how long people are going to live, things like that. And then your net pension liability and the related, it says DOs, DIs, those are deferred inflows and deferred outflows of resources, a lot of that's just provided by para, and they have actuaries that work on that, and then it's just allocated on the face of financial statements, and a lot of the actual management estimate is how those expenses and changes in those balance sheet items are allocated between the opinion units we have.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
So, you head in here, and that was on page 75 of our packet, you were talking about the fire fund and pension, but we contract for fire service, so are we responsible for, I mean, we're not responsible for their pension plan, I mean, I'm assuming you took that into account.
Right, yep, yep, so you don't book, you're not booking a liability, right, you're just contracting fire services, right?
Okay.
A lot of cities that do have their own pension plan, that you would see in a lot of times, a liability or asset related to that, but, right, you're totally contracted there.
And kind of on that same vein, just FYI, this year it is, or last year it was five communities that were serviced by the Mount Fire, but next year, going forward, it's going to be four.
Okay, we'll be sure to update that note.
Yeah, just update it, yep.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then, there were some changes, you'll see if you go through your governor's communication letter, there's a couple paragraphs down, we talked about changes in accounting policies. This year, we did have a couple, so with your OPEB, O-P-E-B, OPEB, so that's that subsequent health insurance. We implemented GASB 75, previously it was under 45, and basically, that just changed some standards of how they had to do that valuation, but since you're a smaller employer, less than 100 employees, it actually didn't change too much, and actually, your liability went down, just because of discount rates and things like that, under this. And then, GASB 89 looks at capitalized interest, and this is one of the few standards you'll see, and probably for quite a few years now, where it actually made things easier for your finance department, for us. Before, we had to look at if you had any general obligation debt in business-type funds, you had to capitalize interest on projects, on capital assets, as they're being built, and normally, it was immaterial for the city, so you really hadn't been immaterial, you know, inflating assets due to that, but this basically says you no longer have to do that, so reduce the work going forward, and actually, it was early implemented, didn't have to be implemented deadline until next year, but since it's, actually makes things easier for everyone, we early implemented this year. And as Dennis said, we received the full cooperation of management, again, as a very smooth audit. Next slide is audit results. In our audit opinion letter, you'll see we have unmodified or a clean opinion, maybe it doesn't sound that awesome, but it's actually the best opinion we can provide, so it was a clean audit. If you have, look at your internal control letter, again, it's just boilerplate language, because there aren't any findings in there, and we also do do an audit under the Office of State Audit's Audit Guide for cities, because they do break up between the different types of governments, and we didn't have any findings this year for legal compliance either. So then, we're going to kind of move into financial results. This first slide here is for your general fund, it looks like, at unassigned fund balance, so that shows up as like a purple bar up there, is your unassigned fund balance, so that's after you take out your non-spendables, restricted amounts are restricted by statute or outside party, and then any committed amounts that are committed by you folks, and then you have some assigned amounts also, that management's assigned. So it's just, this amount that you can freely spend is in that purple bar, and then you have a green line comparing that to your total annual expenditures. So you see, your unassigned fund balance did go down a little in your general fund, and then the percent of fund balance decreased a little, but you still have 48% of your expenditures sitting in unassigned fund balance, so that's about 175 days, or almost six months of reserves there, and that's after backing out $397,000 of expenditures that are considered as part of the subsequent budget, okay, so now if you put that in there, you have about 56%, so very strong reserves in your general fund still, and there's a planned spend down there that, as Brian mentioned earlier, you actually, you actually beat the budget, and there's a planned spend down of your fund balance in the general fund. So this next slide is general fund revenues. Your general fund had total revenues about $4,793,000, this was up about $288,000 from the prior year, and this slide looks at your revenues in totals, as a percent of total, so it's a bar for each major type of revenue there. Your largest one for any city, basically, is going to be your property taxes, and that was at 67% of your revenues this year, that was down just a little from the prior year percent, mostly, actually, your levy, your expenditures in your general fund were consistent, even though your total levy went up 3.4%, the amount allocated to the general fund stayed the same, and then revenues went up, so your percent went down in taxes. And then license and permit revenues, those went up as a percent, because those revenues actually did go up and accounted for most of your revenue increase in your general fund this year, so those represent about 18% of your general fund revenues. And just kind of a note there on the levy, you know, if it's trending down, and then your license and permits are going up, and the rest of your levy went up 3.4%, you know, it's kind of, maybe something about trending the levy to mirror that increase, you know, so you'd expect these bars to kind of stay parallel, the dark bar and the... You know, so you'd expect these, these bars to kinda stay parallel, the dark bar and the, the blue bars that go up, just something to think about there. Next slide is then looking at the expenditure side for the general fund. Same idea, except that we're looking at by departments. So the, the dark blue bar is your general government, light blue is public works, the red's public safety. The yellow there is your parks and rec, and then you have other expenditures. And the bar at the far right shows up green on your screen there. Of course, your biggest percent's gonna be your public safety, so you have your, your police and then your contracted fire in there. So that's fifty-four point six percent, almost fifty-five percent of your expenditures, which is consistent with, you know, most cities, that police is a, it's a big part of it. And then you have your general government's about twenty-two percent, and public works is about twenty percent. And it's relatively consistent, but you can, if you look at your financial statements over the past four years, public safety has been trending up. You can see it took kind of a jump there between sixteen and seventeen as well. And that's mostly just increases in FTEs and salaries and, and benefits. And that's, that's mostly what you see in public safety expenses anyway.
Can you move back to that slide?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Clicker happy there, yeah. But yeah, so it's, it's been trending up mostly in your public safety due to increases in FTEs and, and salaries and benefits. So this slide just kinda brings all the previous ones together for the general fund. So the dark bar is your unassigned fund balance, the first one. And then the light blue is your revenues, and the red's your expenditures. You can see your revenue and expenses both went up, revenues went up two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Again, most of that was related to license and permit, so that's about six point four percent increase in general fund revenues. And expenditures went up about two hundred and twenty-three thousand or four point seven percent. And then you had a little decrease there in fund balance, or this is just showing your unassigned fund balance. But that was to be expected, and you actually beat the budget there, so it didn't decrease as much as originally expected. So that's all I have, and I'm gonna hand it off to Lance here to talk about enterprise funds.
All right. So next, we are gonna look at the enterprise funds, particularly the water, sewer and stormwater funds. We also audit the, the recycling fund and the cable funds, but these ones are much larger than those, so we tend to focus kind of our attention on these ones. This slide here is the unrestricted net position, or we also call it the spendable net position. It's similar to the, the general fund unassigned fund balance. For enterprise funds, they're very capital-intensive, and a lot of, you know, a lot of it goes into the infrastructure. So they, they tend to have a high net position, but a lot of it is tied up in those capital assets. And those, you know, the non-liquid portion, this, we're looking at just kind of those liquid assets kind of over the last five years. That top line is the, the water fund. As you can see, after trending upwards for three years, it's, it decreased slightly. In two thousand and eighteen, it's sitting at two point four million, which was a decrease of about two hundred and sixty-four thousand. The unrestricted net position for the sewer and stormwater, both continue to increase as they have over the past four years. The sewer fund sits at one point seven-three million, which is up two hundred and, two hundred and four thousand from two thousand and seventeen. And the stormwater fund sits at four hundred and seventy-one thousand, which is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase from two thousand and seventeen.
Maybe just one quick comment there, I think some of that has to do with, we haven't gotten, I mean, I think we've been pretty focused on water projects that we've had. And Gary could probably speak to like INI projects and the sewer fund and stormwater projects, we really haven't got to as many as those. So that's why you can see those, the sewer and stormwater, you know, trending up. That's pretty much cash sitting in those funds that really we, we haven't done as many projects there in the last couple of years, based on, a lot of it's time and effort and that kind of thing.
This next slide, we're looking just at the water fund. It's looking at the operating revenues and operating expenditures, which are represented by the, the bars on the graph, over the last five years. There's also two lines that are on there showing the operating income or loss and the income before depreciation. We tend to, we show both of these because depreciation is a non-cash item. And even though there can be positive cash flows from operations, sometimes it tends, when you factor in depreciation, it can, it can result in an operating loss. And that's exactly what's going on here. If you look at income before depreciation, there's about, there's a four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar income before depreciation. But when we factor in depreciation expense for the year, which was about eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for the water fund, you end up with a net operating, operating loss of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Big reason for that is mostly due to the water treatment plant. This was the first full year of depreciation for the water treatment plant. It made up, gave an additional depreciation expense of about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So there was, you know, a significant jump in depreciation expense related to it.
And how many years do you depreciate?
Honestly, we do that over twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Which, yeah, I mean, should last that long. We just don't wanna go over here, stretch it out too long, go forty, fifty if it's not potentially, you know.
Straight line?
Straight line, yeah, yeah. And twenty-eighteen was the, the first year of the depreciation. It was added in seventeen, and then we just added in the first full year, so hard to start depreciation.
Next, we have the sewer fund, and kind of a similar situation is going on. There was operating revenues of about nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in the sewer fund. Their operating expenditures of about one point one million. If you look at income before depreciation, it was two hundred and, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So there was positive oper, or positive cash flow there, but when we factor in depreciation, it comes out with an operating loss of a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Again, nothing to be concerned about, as we saw in that very first enterprise fund slide, you know, the unrestricted net position is continuing to increase. So, yeah, it's generating positive cash flow. Last is the sewer fund. Here again, operating revenues, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Operating expenditures, expenditures, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Income before depreciation, about a hundred and seventy-three thousand. And when we factor in depreciation, there's just a small seventy-three hundred dollar loss in the operating loss. This next slide, we're looking at future debt service. And it's the actual cash flow for debt service, assuming that there are no new issuances in the, in the projected years here. If you look at two thousand and eighteen, the actual cash for debt service for both the government-type and business-type funds was two million, seventy-six thousand. And then you'll notice in two thousand and nineteen, there's a spike. This is just due to timing of, of debt service payments. There were several issuances in two thousand and seventeen related to some of the street projects and things going on in the city. There were no debt principal payments made on those bond issuances in two thousand and eighteen. And then due to the schedules, those payments started in two thousand and nineteen. It jumps up to two point four seven million in two thousand and nineteen, and then slowly it tapers down as the years kinda go on, so. The next slide here, we just have a, kind of a taxes per capita, just a comparison kinda with some of your, your neighboring cities. Please note that this is for two thousand and seven, this is two thousand and seventeen data. The, the OSA hasn't provided the information for two thousand and eighteen yet. It's usually not provided until about December following, following the, the current year. So here's just kind of a, a quick look, just to see how, how you compare taxes per capita to, to some of the neighbors. And as you can see, miniature is at that, just above that five hundred and fifty dollar mark, which is very, very comparable to kind of the cities around, just right, kind of right in the middle. It's nothing, you know, to get too, you know, too, too far into. There's a lot of variables depending on what's happening in the city that, that can, can cause changes. But just kind of, it's a good idea just to keep in mind how, how you kinda compare to, to people around. And one other one, this is just a comparison of current expenditures per capita. Again, this is two thousand and seventeen information. And looking, current expenditures per capita is just below that seven hundred dollar mark. And, and again, very comparable to kind of some of the, the neighboring, your neighboring cities, right, right in the middle, or some higher, some lower. But very, very comparable overall. Hand this off to Lucas for just kinda wrapping it up.
Yeah, so just wanted to touch on some upcoming standards here through the Government County Standards Board. Next year, we'll look at one that, the first couple probably won't affect you too much, so the asset retirement obligations one. So that's looking at anything that the city would have to retire and monitor through the future, any, that could create a liability, they have to book, they have to do another actuarial evaluation. So like counties, they do these for like solid waste dumps, things like that. And that, that's actually a separate standard. But it'd be things like that, and when we talked with management, we couldn't really think of anything that would be material where this would apply. But just so you know, it, it's coming up, and we will go through in more detail next year with management. Also, next year, fiduciary activities. So we're looking at, at, or the GASB County Standards Board said, there's, basically, these are gonna have to present full accrual statements. Whereas your, what's currently called an agency fund will be called a custodial fund. And then they'll be showing actual income statement, whereas right now, they basically have a balance sheet that has cash and then a liability. So it'll expand those statements out, and then they'll look at if really they should be what will be called a custodial fund, or if they need to move into some other type of fund. Like with your, your land use fund right now, there's, there's a, there's a flow chart we'll go through. And basically, if, if it's held for some sort of use and you have enough control over it, it could possibly move into the general fund. There again, we'll look into it in a little more detail next year, but don't expect too many changes there. And then after that, probably the biggest one, two years out, is releases. So currently, you have capital and operating leases, and there's, there's a couple different, four different ways to look at where you can qualify. But anything over a year, or that could possibly be extended or expected to be extended over a year for a lease, will then become a capital lease in your government-wide statements. Won't affect the fund level too much, except for their business-type funds. But basically, most leases you have will technically be capital leases, but materiality, again, will apply. But, and this is both on the revenue and expenditure side. So there will be probably the bigger side, on the revenue side for you, so like any, any antenna leases on top of your water towers, things like that. You could actually end up with a long-term receivable and deferred inflow. The liability side, when we're talking with management, couldn't think of anything too big right now unless you enter into some larger expenditure-side leases. And then one other note we wanted to give you is, is the city did get its certificate of achievement for its CAFER again in two thousand and seventeen. There's hardly any comments at all, which is great to see. And then they will be applying again for two thousand and eighteen, and we don't expect any big issues there. And unless there's any questions, we're open for those, otherwise, it's a big thank you.
I just have a quick question, more, so what does it mean, it says on page thirty-six in, in our packet, it says compensated absences. What is that?
Yeah, so that's, that's your sick and vacation balances outstanding at the end of the year.
Okay.
Yep, so, so the vacation, so if somebody's expected to basically take their vacation within a year, you book a liability for it. And then also sick, there's, there's some different standards applied to sick, but you also do estimate a liability for, for sick as well.
It kinda threw me off because you're talking about general obligation bonds and revenues, and, and all of a sudden compensated absences. And I'm like, okay, okay.
Yep, yeah, it's a, it's a long-term liability to group it in there, yeah. Any other questions?
Just maybe another FYI. In, I believe it was on page eighty-two in our packet, you mentioned about mound, you said the mound police are in the fire hall. And actually, they're no, they no longer have a police department. So just for references, they use it, it's a fire department and admin now.
Okay, we'll be sure to update the notes for that.
Just a minor little glitch. I just thought if people are reading this, then, you know, it's better if it's accurate, that's all.
No, thank you.
All right. That's all I have. Anybody else? Lot of reading, thank you. Lot of information, and really glad to hear that it went very well. Congratulations, Brian, and also on the CAFER award, of course. And so, good job, good job to all, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. We do need to receive and accept the audit. So is there a motion to receive and accept the audit for twenty-eight, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Trumpelin and second by Ms. Bruce to receive and accept the audit as presented here this evening. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So do you need to say anything about the CAFER award?
Oh, no, I mean, I think we, we had received it back in December of this last year. So, no, it's, it's always, I think as the auditor said, it's a, I think it's a win-win. I mean, it's, if any time the city can get an award, whether it's the CAFER award or the governor's award or whatever, I think it's a good thing. But it's also a win for our residents that wanna read more because it's additional information. It's all those statistical tables at the back of the audit that show those ten-year trends. If, that's part of going for the CAFER award, you know, a lot of cities that don't go for the award, that information isn't there, so, because they don't need to provide it to, to get that award. So I, I think, I'm, it, I'm glad that the city council's been supportive of the staff to continue to go for that award, so.
Well, I think it just adds to the transparency, so I think that's a good thing, so, good job, thank you. So then, we'll move on to persons to be heard. We don't have anybody here or signed up. So next is our consent agenda items, a short list this time. It's A, approve our work session meeting minutes from May sixth, two thousand and nineteen. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from May sixth, two thousand and nineteen. And C is a resolution to approve our claims, it's number sixty-dash-one-nine. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. We have no public hearings, and we'll move on to business items. I believe Mr. Hornby?
Correct.
Miss, or Mr., okay, Mr. Hornby. Basically, an update on Enchanted Lane, Tuxedo, and Halsted, I believe.
Correct, and Mayor and members of the council, thanks for welcoming me back, I appreciate that. It's good to be back for a guest appearance. For the Tuxedo Boulevard, Enchanted Lane project, we have talked to the prime contractor, who was also anxious to get the project done. They have a subcontractor that they have to do restoration work. In this memo, identified that there hadn't been a schedule provided. We have met with them last week, and they indicated they would be into the last half of this week. Now, they're a little vague on that, mainly because of the weather forecast. So they're also, you know, contractors, look at that ten-day forecast, how many rain days are gonna have. Typically, a rain day will set them back one day, maybe two, depending on how heavy rain it is. So should look at them at the end, end of this week, if we get a lot of rain, it's likely you're gonna get pushed to next week, so.
How much time for that?
You know, this should, there is very little restoration to do out there. I mean, it's not that far outside the roadway.
Right.
And the area with the boat launch, you already took care of that. So it's a paper driveway, restoration of some boulder landscaping for a resident on the far south end. And then it's the turf restoration on, you know, a couple of feet within the edge of the road. So it should, really, it's a couple, couple, three days at the most.
And I asked Allison when she wrote this memo to document all the times that they've made contact with the vendor, and so that's why you see those dates in there. Was it that we were, we just wanna make sure the council knew that everybody's trying to get these people to do the work. It's like pulling teeth sometimes.
Then for Halsted Drive, we've been, we have been working with contractors, and they, I think they're also want to get the project done. We did provide some information, working with the city staff and with the contractor, some things that we wanna see done, some things that the city would take over and do. And those are identified in, in the memo. We have been working on a draft pay voucher ten that Allison indicated would come in your way in the first part of June. And that would take care of the quantities that we have up to date. Some of the things that we're running into is that we get a point where we get the quantity set, and all of a sudden they have another subcontractor send us some data, and, or send them some data, so they forward it to us. Well, it's not in the right format for state-funded projects, so they had to go back and do that, put it in the correct format. When we evaluate, we also evaluate to make sure that the work that they're claiming is done, was done, and the time and the hours, those kind of things are correct. So you're not paying, once that happens, if it's extra work, it goes into a change order, that goes to the state. And once the state says it's okay to process, then we come back to you and provide that information. There are a couple of things that's, extra work on the project, but we're still trying to filter through some of those.
Do you have any completion date? This has been going on quite a while.
I, I don't actually even have a schedule for them to complete the work. And Allison is working with city staff. working with city staff to also put together a, we, I'm not saying we haven't asked for it, we have.
Yeah.
They have been out here a couple of times and not told us, which is irritating, because we don't know about it, so we can't tell you they're working, and then we get residents calling and saying, hey, they're working and making a mess or something, and you know, that's how we find out, but they're supposed to contact us at least twenty-four hours in advance when they're going to be out here, so I've had to have that correspondence with them here, too, so. But I do have to say that when we met with them in February here, that they, there's more of a mode of cooperation in getting these things finalized, so. I think if anything's good news, that's some good news from that standpoint. And then we do have an irrigation system the staff is working on, I understand that's, we have a contractor on board that does a lot of work for the city that'll help get that done, so we can finish our restoration of that property.
Yeah, sooner than later.
Yes.
Thank you, yeah. Any other questions?
How big will this pay voucher ten be, do you know?
It's in the range of fifty thousand, and then we'll be retaining about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, we still have retention.
What's remaining on the contract?
That's pretty much going to be it, I believe.
And most of that fifty thousand, I think it was in the memo here, too, has to do with that topsoil item, and that's the vast majority of it, and then the other stuff really they should be doing out there, I think is mainly punch list stuff that they either hadn't done correctly originally, or need to clean up, or one of which we wouldn't be paying for them a second time, or again, you know, that's their responsibility here.
And that's a good point, is that we're actually not, in this pay voucher, there's going to be some amount for topsoil and seeding that we're not paying them for in this pay voucher, because it's not acceptable. And in fact, that's part of one of the items that the city would take over.
And there's a few other things that we've decided to essentially take off the table, but we're still working on that, and that kind of, kind of gets us to the, actually the, kind of the last paragraph of the staff report from Allison, where I didn't use, we didn't use the word liquidated damages, but that's what that's alluding to, so, you know, we know that there's some reserves money there, and, you know, they may claim that they're, they're due it, but we have obviously some claims based on the extensive delays that have been taking place to complete this thing, so. You know, I think we're trying to work through the punch list, or the list, there's punch lists, as Brian mentioned, but we're trying to figure out the best way to get those done. The best way could be in city crews do it, and they wouldn't get paid for it, that was originally on the list, but that would be part of the negotiation, so.
But hasn't city staff done a lot of stuff out there that?
Yeah, they have, but you know, Gary's been documenting all the times that they're out there to do things that, you know, when they should have done it, so. Again, that'll be part of the discussion that we're going to have with the legal folks as we start getting into that, but we really wanted to have a, kind of a pinned-down number for the engineering stuff, so we weren't quibbling about that, we just want to go forward and say, this is what we have left, here's the amount that we have left, and now, and now we can start our discussion on who owes what to who on the liquidated damages, so.
Do we have, other than the hundred and fourteen thousand, do we have any other funding set aside for the liquidated damages?
The other thing you would have contractually is a, is the contractor's bond.
Okay, and we're not going to release that?
No, that, that has to remain in effect until the contract is closed, and then in order to close the contract, the contractor has to have their bonding company, their consent of sure, the consent of surety to final pay the project.
I just want to make sure that that doesn't get closed out and go away before we have our negotiations for the liquidated damages.
And in part, the city's in control of that, because that's the point when you're going to make final payment, that's up to the council to decide when you do that.
Okay, so is this fifty thousand considered final payment?
No. No, no.
No, that's right.
That's just a pay voucher.
Paul was referencing that hundred and some thousand of retainage dollars, we won't release that until we get proper resolution as far as where, you know, where we think we're sitting financially and contractually, I guess, or.
Yeah, I just want to.
You have leverage, yes.
Yeah, we're holding some cards here, so.
All right.
We've got to play in the right order to win.
Just would be nice to get this thing done, yeah, and I, I know staff is, would like it done as well, because I know it's been a real pain.
I would say amen to that.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, that concludes our business items, so we'll move on to staff reports, we'll start with city administrator, Mr. Brony.
I just have a few items here, Mayor and Council. Last week I did attend the Public Safety Advisory Commission on Tuesday the fourteenth, and also that day we had the mound fire commission meeting, and then just as a reminder, WeCan is having their breakfast that was supposed to take place in, what was it, April, March? Whenever we got a big pile of snow, one of those times, so they picked May thirtieth, so you never know, but that's when they're, they're going to hold their breakfast that morning, so. So on that, I don't have anything else.
Mr. Abel, you need somebody for the planning commission for May?
Correct, and it would be Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, because of the holiday, so it's a different day. It's usually on a Monday, but it would be on a Tuesday night, I do need someone to attend that.
Is somebody available? Let me check my calendar. I will do the June park commission meeting and the June planning commission meeting, I'm not available on the twenty-eighth.
That's next week already, isn't it?
Right.
I think I can do it. What time does that start again?
Seven.
Seven, yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay, thank you, Pam. And then Ms. Taber.
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Just a quick update on hiring, so our building inspector posting closed at the end of last week. We had four applicants, all were qualified based on our minimum postings, so we will be holding those interviews next Wednesday, May twenty-ninth. Our public works posting closes beginning of this week, and then we have interviews set up, a time allotted for it next week to interview for the lead assignment, which was the internal assignment that we talked about the last meeting, so, just a quick update, okay?
All right, question, do we have some summer hires in the public works area?
We do, we have two seasonals currently, they're returning, they've been with us for a couple of seasons each, and then we do have an existing posting, we haven't had any other additional interest in that.
When do they start?
It depends on their schedule, so we had one start two weeks ago, one that's starting this week, and then, just depending on schedules, we have some who are coming from college, some are coming out of high school, so it just varies, so we'll leave that posting up for a while, ideally Gary could use another person or two, but our two returning seasonals are fantastic, so we're excited to have them back.
All right, so we'll move on to council reports, I'll start out here, so, yeah, on the fourteenth was a busy day, I first also attended the public safety meeting, some of the items that we talked about are the county road forty-four project, and I know it's a nightmare for residents all over the area, and we've taught, we talked about that, we also talked about that at the fire commission meeting, we also talked about the striping the roundabout to a single lane, that's out of our purview, out of our realm, but Paul has been in contact with MinDOT, and we're hoping that they will get around to that this season, so, going down, it's a two-liner right now, and it's very confusing, and a lot of accidents have occurred there, so we're working on that. The fire commission meeting, they presented us with their long-term ten-year financial plan, and their, which also included their projected budgets for the next ten years, they're looking at possibly somewhere between a three and a three half, three and a half percent increase. Some of that is due to the fact that we have fewer people, like I said earlier with the audit, we no longer have Minnetonka Beach in the mix, so some of that will fall on to, kind of get spread out over the other four remaining cities. And they're also having a fish fry, which is June fish fry and dance, which is June first. The other meeting that, also on the fourteenth, Mr. Malader and I attended a meeting with Three Rivers Park District, very informative, a very good meeting, we met our new representative, and hopefully we'll have more communications with her in the future. And the other thing that I've been working on with Ms. Taber, of course, is the bus tour, we drove the route on Friday, we did the timing and all of the nuances there, and we did make a stop, and we will have a special event on the bus this year, a little different than we've done before, we will be stopping at one of our new businesses here in Minnetrista. We won't stop very long, but we will be stopping at the Painter Creek Winery, so if you're interested in joining our bus tour, please call City Hall and get on the, on the list. I know that it, up last year and we had people waiting, it is June eleventh, which is a Tuesday evening, and we will be departing City Hall promptly at six o'clock. Then also I attended the Gillespie Board Meeting, and I also attended the Northwest League, some of the people that were there, we met the new Met Council rep, Judy Anderson, for District One, that's not our district, but we also asked her to invite rep for District Three, which is our district, and she's going to see if she can get him to come at our next meeting, and also Chair Slawick will be the speaker either in June or September, depending on her schedule, and also at our meeting was a staff member from Congressman Phillips' office. So those are the meetings that I've been at.
The mound fire projected increase, you said three to three and a half?
Well, that's their, it's not necessarily that the city would see that, all of that.
Spread out over the.
It's the formula that they use, so we have to see how that comes out.
And that would be, again, estimated just for this next year, or?
Right, yeah, I mean, again, the ten-year financial plan, their projections are just that, you know, things are going to possibly change in the future, but they're looking at potentially a three and a three and a half percent increase, depending on how things come out.
And they have, I was at the fire commission meeting, too, they, they have a two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-dollar bonded debt that ends in 2022, so that's a lot of money that they're not going to have to spend every year, so I think we need to remember that when they talk about increases over the next few years, because that's, that's two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars that they won't be spending, and even losing Minnetonka Beach, I think they were eighty-some-thousand dollars, that's, that's quite a bit, so I think we need to remember that.
Yeah, they'll be using some fund balance reserves as well to offset that, that increase, and, and again, they're, again, projecting out, we should be in pretty good shape.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, due to tourist day being canceled, just a quick update on the pig races. Good news, all the sponsors did not want their money back, they wanted us to store it in the piggy bank, so not a problem. Thank you very much. So we ended up collecting three thousand one hundred dollars, so it was completely paid for, so we will not have to fundraise next year. The prizes were all, I had to call and make sure that they did not get expired, there was one company that did serve sides, so I returned them on Friday, and he will re-assume new ones next year, everybody else's were no expiration date. The prizes for the contest for name the pig team did still go out, because we had some great team names, so those prizes are being distributed this next week, and I have to show you.
What was the name of the one, the one first prize?
Cassandra, do you have though, that list?
No.
Oh, shoot, I didn't bring it.
They were cute though.
Next time, yeah, it would be fun to hear, yeah.
One was really cute that I remember, because it was my niece that submitted it, Chris P. Bacon.
Very funny.
Okay, so because you guys didn't get to see the pigs, I brought one tonight, not a real one.
We're glad to hear that.
This is in my mom's garden, but we did make a change to the band, because the band would get shrunk up, and the pigs did not like the band to be put over the head, so now we made them into super pig capes, so as they run, you know, the capes will be flapping around, and this was the name, our Speedway was Excel Energy Speedway, so that will be the name of it again next year, so, yeah, I just, my mom, by the way, donated time to make these little, little ants, so anyways, it's a family affair. Okay, Burlox, Burlox, what a generous donator they are, and what a great business, very nicely always offers the golfing for four for free with a golf cart, and so when I talked to Steph, I asked him if he needed it back, and he said he did not want to have it back, and that we could use that this year for another event, and he would issue another one for next year. So my idea is perhaps we could use that gift card for the city bus tour, and we could do a drawing for anybody that comes on the bus tour, and somebody will win an incredible nice prize of free golf for four.
Nice.
Can I tell Steph that is okay? We're good? We're good? Okay, so I will let Steph know that. Okay, WCC meeting, we have Spear of the Lakes coming up on July nineteenth through the twentieth, and we have always sponsored the silver, silver level, which is a thousand dollars, and so I brought the application if we'd like to have our sponsorship again for that, it is a really good event, very well-attended and so forth, so. Mike usually does the form, so I don't know, is that something we bring up again, or?
It's up to you and the members of the council, it's, traditionally we supported the Spear of the Lakes at that silver level, so if you don't feel like we need to do it, speak up, but otherwise I think it's, it's a good way to connect with our businesses and our, and our city residents who will participate.
And Paul, are you going to have a couple of squad cars, or a squad car? I know you, in the past, you always have.
Yes, we typically have, so we have, we can continue that if you wish.
And we did not do the parade ourselves, other than the police.
If anybody's interested in participating in the parade, let us know.
Okay. Let's see, WeCan Fire, I talked about one, there is another event, WeCan Open Houses on May sixteenth, which is.
Which was?
Which was, never mind. Let's see, oh, and the speakers, this, at this last meeting, there were two of them. One was from the West Tonka Healthy Community Collaborative, and it was really interesting, it's a task force, made up of several community organizations and leaders that share a common goal, and make the West Tonka community and schools an encouraging and prosperous place for at-risk kids and families. It was founded in nineteen ninety-eight, and there's fifty staff members that all work within this organization. The funding comes from the federal, state, and the county government, it is not funded through the school district. And then we had another speaker, Kirk Lay, who is the mound West Tonka Rotary President, they've been around fifty-seven years, only twenty members, I was shocked, the stuff they have done is incredible for only having twenty people, if anybody is interested, they would love to have more volunteers, but very passionate about the organization and very well-done. And that's all I have.
Ms. Malader.
I was not able to make the last LMCD meeting over there, the one, next one is this coming Wednesday, and I will be at that, we will be looking at preliminary budget, actually, I think we might be looking at final budget, budget, and reviewing the notes, so that should be coming out, I think that gets presented to the cities in June, and so that is on the agenda.
Our May sixteenth Pioneer Sarah Creek meeting was canceled due to lack of a timely agenda, and the chairperson was out of town, the vice chair didn't think he could make it, which meant it would go to the treasurer, and maybe they didn't want the meeting, because that would have been me.
I did see, though, that you had your review, and had really a good review by Bowser, which was good, very good, congratulations to Joe and, and the whole staff.
Yeah, Joe does, Joe does a hell of a job.
Very good, yep, congratulations.
Thank you.
I went to the fire commission meeting on the fourteenth, and I think it was adequately covered by Mayor Whalen and Mr. Brony, one of the, one of the things that we talked about there was the problems on county road forty-four and the delays there, and I just wanted to find out, Mayor Whalen, you had said that you were going to meet with our Met Council rep, and?
I said I would call her, yep, not the rep, but, well, the council rep and possibly, haven't gotten hold of them yet.
And I was confused about the names, you gave a name of Nora, is that?
That's her first name, that's the Met Council Chair, Nora Slawick.
But that's not the person that we're?
She's the Chair of the Met Council, and then our representative is Chris, is it Chris Schaefer? Is that correct?
I think so.
I think so.
I have not met the person.
I have not met him, I do not know him.
Okay. But that, that's just a concerning thing going on, it's delayed, and we don't know when it's going to be.
And I've spoken with staff as well, yeah.
And a public safety issue.
Yeah.
But that was all. But that was all.
Yeah. Okay. Any other? Oh, Mr. Falls, can you give us just a quick, brief rundown on Tristide?
Sure. I'd be happy to. Madam Mayor, members of the council, you're all aware of this, I'm sure, but I've had some inquiries as to why it is that we decided to cancel Tristide. And I just think more for the public, their understanding. Tristide has historically been advertised as a rain or shine event. And so, for years, it kind of carried on that way. It seems like in recent years, it has been more rain than shine. And so, two years ago was a prime example of that, where we had pretty much a complete washout and many of our vendors canceled on us. And so, that kind of forced us to start to evaluate and weigh the, you know, the benefits versus the cost. And so, it's really hard to know when you're hearing for days in advance that we're going to have, they're expecting a complete washout, it's going to be windy, it's going to be cold. It's not just about the rain. And really, an environment that most people aren't going to want to come out and enjoy. So, then we have to, as staff, decide, well, is it worth spending taxpayer dollars and a fairly significant amount, if we're, you know, going to be honest, to put this thing on, knowing that likely it's not going to be well-attended. And so, and the real challenge, real challenge to that is we have to make those decisions in time to call off vendors so we don't incur those costs. And so, we did that. As, as we all know, meteorologists aren't always completely accurate. It's a tough business. And it didn't rain all that much between the hours of 11 and 2. It did rain right up until then, or pretty much. It was still very cold and very windy, so it would have been miserable anyhow and probably not well-attended. So, I still think we made the right call and we saved taxpayer dollars for a time that we can do this and, and provide a good event that's well-attended. And so, with that, I think, you know, we've learned some things as we evaluate each year and I think we'll continue to do that and maybe discuss some things that we can do, whether that includes a date change or, or whatever it may be. But we'll, we'll certainly look very closely at that so we can try and provide a consistent event and be able to use those dollars wisely and have everyone enjoy it.
Thank you.
And so, I just wanted to share that so the public understands what goes into that decision.
Right. And it was raining in the morning and staff would have had to been out there in the rain setting up, so that would have been miserable as well.
Yes. And the night before was very rainy and high winds, so we're not even sure that the tents they would have had to set up the day before.
Right.
Would have survived that, so.
Right.
It, I think it was the right call. There's no doubt in my mind and, and it's, it's too bad. We're disappointed, but nonetheless, I think it'll be good in the future.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, you're right. It was a good call. Thank you. Okay. I think that concludes everything on our agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and second by Ms. Bruce. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0.